Hello, you didn't notice? She did, right? Mora.
How about Mora?
Oh, she didn't, okay.
So that's the difference, so like, you know.
One house away from the finish. So why didn't she turn her pillars? That's disgusting. That's absurd.
I know. [laughter]
We have a universal standard.
And so, I got shut up.
Right, right. Like, in the stands, all sand things? As long as I can do it like United, where it's funny. Yeah, yeah. I keep you watching. I haven't seen that yet. Hi. Okay. All right, everybody? You're good? I'm sure you are. Okay. All right, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Apologize for the minor delay, but we'll go ahead and get going here. Good afternoon. Welcome to the city of, or welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines Zoning Board of Adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to hear and make decisions on requests for variances and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to review conditional use permit requests, and to consider appeals from any decision of the city staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines and have been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers and receive no compensation for their public service. I'll introduce our board members here. We've got seven of us appointed to the board. We have five board members here today. I'm going to come back to that in a minute. But I'll go ahead and introduce our board members. On the audience's right is Justin Gross. Next to him is Rhonda Sedillo. I'm Mel Pins, the board chair. To my right is Marlis Jones. And to the audience's far left here shortly, Nathan Blake should be arriving. I'll introduce our city staff, who will be assisting us today with our hearing. The zoning board of adjustments' legal counsel is Mr. Gary Guidelock, to my left. Also assisting from down here on the floor is Frank Dunn Young, senior city planner, Bert Droste, deputy planning administrator, Catherine Drehas, city planner, and Eric Lundie, zoning enforcement officer. Our meeting moderator here and our IT right here in front of me is Tyler Hall. I'll go ahead and cover the meeting's procedure here. The board of adjustment is a quasi-judicial board. This hearing will be conducted within the procedures and format as authorized by Iowa law and this city's ordinances. This meeting is open to the public. The meeting is also being recorded by both audio and video for a legal record of these proceedings. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. Copies of that agenda and staff recommendations were available just right out here as you came in the door. So if you didn't get one yet when I'm through with my remarks, feel free to step up and grab one of those. The board members have each received a copy of that agenda and staff recs. The board is required to base its decision on each item upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each item will be announced in the order that it appears on the agenda. Items that are listed on what's called the consent portion of the agenda, which is the first portion of our agenda, are not planned to be individually discussed. Rather, they will be considered for approval for the items requested in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless there's, unless the appellant does not agree to the conditions recommended by staff, or if there's an individual in the audience or a board member that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion of the matter can occur. And I'll come back to that consent agenda here in just a minute to work everybody through that. For the regular portion of the agenda, after an item is announced, city staff will first give, give a brief overview of the appeal and present any written comments received prior to the hearing. Then the applicant or their representative will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. Then we'll take public comment on that hearing item. Anyone wishing to speak in support of, in opposition to, or even in neutrality of an appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to present their comments. This will be their one and only opportunity to address the board regarding the agenda item at hand. Once all concerned citizens have spoken on the item, the board will then ask any additional questions of city staff. And lastly, the applicant will be given the option to provide three, three minutes for rebuttal or other closing comments. If you do wish to speak on an agenda item, you must speak only from the podium here at the front of the room. We'll kind of call the items in order as they appear. We need you to give both your complete name and address as appropriate, either your business or residence, in the event that you may need to be contacted for legal notices related to the outcome of this appeal. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are asked to ensure that they're respectful of time considerations, and if necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. The board chair will then close any further public comment on the agenda item, and the board will immediately deliberate the request and make a decision on the appeal. Please note that it takes at least four affirmative votes for any zoning appeal to gain approval. And I'm going to pause on that for a moment. As I mentioned, this is a seven-member board. We usually have very, we have very dedicated members all the way around, including those that aren't here today. But there are occasions where we don't have seven members. It always takes four votes to affirm or approve any appeal that we're hearing. If we get down to five members, like we, I believe we'll have today when Nathan gets here, when we're down to five members, again, it always takes four, so that's 80 percent. So when we get to that point, if you've got an agenda item and you feel like, gee, I don't know, those aren't the best odds for me, I would rather put this off a month, we could consider allowing you to continue this item to next month. However, if we get to next month, I can't guarantee that all seven members are here either. Certainly, if we get down to just four members, well, you've got to convince all of us. But if you think you've got a good case for an appeal, feel free to give it a try here today, but I just want to let you know that you would have that option. So before we get to the regular hearing, I will go ahead and poll those folks who are here for their appeals as the applicant and ask if you would want to defer to next month. I'm not suggesting it, just giving it as an option. So we'll come to that, back to that in a minute. For any item that we do approve today, we ask that you wait until at least one week from today's hearing to contact the city's permit and development center to obtain any necessary building or sign permits that are related to your appeal so that the decision of this board can be documented in the form of a decision and order. That decision and order will be provided to you and city staff for the record. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision by this board, or such approval shall expire. The decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Iowa District Court. So if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong or should be changed, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. Any material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation is part of the permanent record. So if you plan to present any photos, documents, plans, that you haven't already provided copies of to city staff, you'll need to do that. And if you'd like a copy of any of those items, please contact city staff after the hearing. Just a couple of housekeeping items. Please avoid any undue conversation in the audience so as to limit distractions during the hearing. You're doing a fine job. Please ensure your cellphone has been silenced. Also, sounds great so far. And if you need to use the restroom, you can just walk out these doors. You don't have to go back downstairs. Walk past the staircase, and there's restrooms on your left by the elevators. Subject to the length of the hearing, we'll take a break at around 3:00 or 3:30 if we need to for about five minutes. And once your agenda item that you're interested in is completed, you're welcome to leave the hearing. So what we're going to do here is I'm going to ask Frank to step up, and we're going to see if we do have any changes to the agenda.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Frank Dunn. A couple items. First, I want to recognize that item two for the 4515 Merle Hay Road, there is a correction to the staff recommendation. Staff had requested that the cumulative area of the three-wall-mounted sign shall not exceed 97.2 square feet. In error, it had only indicated what was earned, which was 82.5 square feet. So staff does want to recognize an update to that staff rec. We are still looking to leave that one on consent, however. And then we do have two additional items that we are looking to have moved. Item five for a monument sign at 1014 East 14th Street. The applicant has agreed to staff recommendations, which would allow that monument sign to be no larger than 50 percent of what the earning would generally allow. We are also asking for item eight, which is at 4760 East Watrous Avenue, which is a conditional use for the addition of some stop valves on existing underground utility. Staff is looking to request that item be moved to consent as well.
Okay. All right. So it's okay with staff. I think what I'll do here, so staff has proposed adding item five, a zoning exception at 1014 East 14th Street, to the consent agenda, meaning we would approve what's been requested. And there are some conditions that would go with that. So I'm just curious, with a raise of any hands in the audience, would there be anybody opposed to us moving item number five at 1014 East 14th Street for a sign exemption to our consent agenda? Anybody be opposed to that? Okay, seeing none. Item eight, conditional use permit request, that's related to some construction of some changes in equipment on an existing, what appears to be, underground utility. Would anybody be opposed to us moving item eight to the consent agenda for potential approval at 4760 East Watrous? Item eight. Okay, seeing none. Board members, unless there's any heartburn, items five and eight, would there be a motion to move that to consent? Okay, motion by Marlis, and a second by Rhonda. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay, that's, takes four, so we got four. I hope Nathan starts to get here soon.
[inaudible].
Okay, all right, so we'll talk slower. Okay, so now, what we're going to do is take a look at the consent agenda. As was presented initially, we had items one, two, three, and four on consent. We've added five and eight. So again, to help the audience here, basically, we would be looking to approve the requested exemptions, temporary uses or conditional use permits in items one, two, three, four, five, and eight, unless there's a member of this audience.
Mel.
Yeah.
Item one and two would be the items on consent and then the movement up.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. So items one, two, five, and eight. Sorry about that. I missed the asterisk. Right? So items one, two, five, and eight. So I'm going to go ahead and read through those again. If there's anybody that would be opposed to us granting approval on item one, which is a temporary use related to outdoor events in relation to the grounds in or around Veterans' Auditorium, there would be anybody opposed to us granting that? Okay, we've got one member of the audience would be opposed to that. I'm assuming they want to speak on that issue, so we'll put that on our regular agenda. Item two is a zoning exception request up on Merle Hay Road related to, I believe, Charles Gave's Ford. Is there anybody here that would be opposed to us granting the requested zoning exceptions for signage on item two? Just raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. And I'm going to read five and eight again, although I think we polled on that to get them on consent. Item five, zoning exception at 1014 East 14th, and item eight, a conditional use permit at 4760 East Watrous. Anybody in the audience opposed to us granting those? All right, seeing none, none then. What we'll do here is, that would leave us with items two, five, and eight on consent. Would there, if there's not any discussion by the board, would there be a motion to grant approvals for the requested relief?
Chair, I'd like to move items two, five, and eight from the consent for approval.
All right, motion by Justin, and I heard Rhonda's second. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, so motion carries. So if you were here for items two, five, or eight, those appeals have been approved subject to the staff recommendations contained on, in the agenda. You'll get a copy of that decision and order next week for your records, in case you need any sign or building permits. So if you're here for items two, five, or eight, those have been approved, and we thank you for coming down. So what we'll do then is we will move ahead with our regular agenda, and we'll go ahead then and hear item one first. That's a temporary use request, the vicinity of 833 Fifth Avenue, in, on, or about or around the Veterans' Auditorium.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Frank Dunn Young, planning staff. And so the proposal in front of us today is for use of the property for up to two outdoor events each month during the months of May, June, July, August, September, and October for a period of five years ending June 30, 2027. The property is within the vicinity of 833 Fifth Avenue, and it is the site of the Polk County Veterans' Auditorium. A temporary use approval for a temporary use in a DX2 district is the appeal that's being requested. So I'll go ahead and pull up some slides to show some of the context of the property in question. The parcel in yellow is what's being examined. However, we'll get a closer view of the area that is particular to the temporary use events being proposed, which are on the north side of the building. And so this would be a southwestern view of the area, the parking, the area for the temporary use. Got another view that would be facing straight south. Another view from facing, say, southeast. Here is an aerial view of the same parking lot that is being looked at. And here is a drawing of the area supplied by the appellant for the area in question. As you can see, it's just north of the, the Veterans' Auditorium. It's south of Wells Fargo, or, sorry, it's west of Wells Fargo, and then it's south of the parking. And then there's a mixture of businesses that would be off to the west. And here is a closer image of the temporary use that's being requested as, as a layout. And so you can see off to the west, they'd be looking at, there'd be porta-potties, tables set up along the north side. There would be food truck, some administrative-type uses. Along the south, there'd be Iowa corn trailer, radio, and vendors, along with some band parking similar off to the east. And so with the, granting a, a temporary use, there is a limitation to the quantity that can be administratively allowed, as determined by the deputy zoning enforcement officer. In this instance, due to the nature of the site, being the event center that it is, there is a proposal to have more than would be typically allowed under certain circumstances. Staff is recommending approval of the requested temporary use, subject to a, a set of conditions that are typical for temporary uses. And I'll go ahead and scroll through what those conditions would be. And the, the appellant was required to hold a neighborhood meeting. We did receive feedback from a, a few neighbors that were in support. And this is the map that shows that. Areas that were contacted. And then here are a few of the responses that we received by mail. Here's the letter that was sent out by the applicant.
And what questions do you have for me?
Yeah, questions for Frank from the board. Justin?
Frank, are these events, are they going to be taking place on the weekend, during the week? Do we know? Any indication from the applicant?
The, the applicant has asked for two events each month, and so...
So it can be whenever. It can be during the week or weekend.
Or each, each, yeah.
Okay.
Could be whenever.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and I think the applicant could expand upon the true, or, or what their intention is behind that as well.
Okay. Any other questions for Frank?
Frank, I think, you know, for many of us, certainly in the City of Des Moines or the metro, we've probably attended an event down there at Community Choice Veterans' Auditorium, Hy-Vee Hall, et cetera. I know I can certainly remember there have been previous outdoor activities, tailgating events, et cetera. Were those previously dealt with administratively, or one by one, or what, what was the pass process?
Yep, that, that is correct. Generally, when, when someone is wishing to hold a temporary use, they will apply to the deputy zoning enforcement officer for a temporary use. However, when the frequency becomes, and I would ask the zoning enforcement officer to expand upon the number, when, when it creates a, a quantity that's, that's
Sure.
great enough, then it, it's determined that that becomes the time for them to come in and seek
Sure.
an amendment.
Right. So maybe occasional versus semi-regular, maybe it's time to sit down and then review some ongoing conditions. And that's, I'm assuming, why the applicant applied then?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, good enough for me. Okay, anything else? All right, so applicant, or representative of the applicant, if they're here, they can come on up. And sir, I'll have you give your name and address in a second, but as I said, for the regular portion of the agenda, since there's only five of us here today... No, no, stay, stay, stay. Oh, you got to... Ah ha, he wants to bring some... Since there's only five of us here today, as the applicant, you have the right, if you so choose to exercise it, to ask that your item be deferred to next month. I can't guarantee that there'll be seven of us, but if you feel like you've got a good case and you would meet the requirements and the ordinance, you're, you're welcome to have at it. So it's kind of like an hour later, so.
We'll, we'll proceed.
Want to go for it?
Yeah, we want to proceed.
All right, all right. So go ahead, we just need your name and address. We got up to 10 minutes.
Okay. Jack Ligon, the assistant general manager, the Iowa Event Center. So address would be 833 Fifth Avenue. To expand upon some of the questions that have specifically brought up, we have been hosting these events up to three that we've hosted this year. We are and have a request where we are looking to host another one that would finish out this calendar year. So we did request for multiple in the timeframe of May through, through October to really, it's based upon what events we are hosting inside. We typically don't host events specifically outside that are really a standalone outdoor event, but there are times where we want to do some pre-event-type activities. Some of the ones we've done in the past with our tenant hockey team, they like to do kind of the kickoff season, do something outdoor, just to kind of get people out, have a nice time with, typically, it's a small band, nothing major. Really, our bigger acts and events, you know, we are hosting inside. But it's really kind of a pre-tailgate-type event. Our numbers that we see, as far as people that do attend, are not anywhere close to the actual event size. We're really in, you know, it can vary anywhere from a couple hundred. I would say at the largest we've ever done, really over the entire time that we've been open, or, or maybe in the, you know, 750. So it's not that it is a large outdoor concert or event we're trying to host, it's really just adding value to our customers that are coming to, really, the Iowa Event Center as a whole. So they are attending, you know, either an event in Wells or the convention center in Hy-Vee Hall. So the reason we did request for two per month over the period of time is, we have seen over the past years that we have hosted, really, this past year, we've hosted three within this timeframe, but we don't know when they're going to happen, so we need a little bit of flexibility. We don't anticipate using the total days that we were requesting. It just, again, allows that flexibility is really what we're, we're looking for. I think that's kind of it from, from our end. We did provide a, a basic layout. Again, some of that might vary, but it's really some food, some snacks, family-friendly, bathrooms, because you are outside, and then, you know, some type of entertainment, some different booths, some different things to give away, cornhole, that type of thing, that's really just kind of a family-friendly atmosphere before we have our event.
Okay. All right. So, you up for some questions?
Yes.
All right, Nathan?
Apologies if this was already covered previously, but would you be open to a, and I don't even know if this is possible, actually, but would you be open to a cap on the number annually that you host? It sounds like, my understanding, and maybe I'm misreading this, because I came in tardy, but it sounds like the, the reason you want twice a month is for flexibility's sake, but overall, over the course of the, annually, you're not expecting to have 10?
Correct. So, yes, we, there is some flexibility on a number over the entire timeframe of May to October, we'd be four. Really, it's, however makes the most sense by either requesting per month, because a lot of it, again, depends on schedules. Our concerts that we host, we're booking kind of... Our concerts that we host, we're booking kind of years in advance, so we don't know when they're going to come, and that will kind of determine when we want to do these events. So yes, there is some flexibility on what we're requesting, if we do want to set a cap of some timeframe, but really that May to October is weather-wise when we would look to have these opportunities.
So related to that, the way I read this, what would be allowed, it would be basically no more than two per month, correct?
Correct.
So if you don't have an event in August, then you can't use those credits to have more in September. It'd just be no more than two per month, and that's what it boils down to, right?
Yes. Yeah, and again, that's where from our, historically, we're in the three to four range,
In a whole year.
In the whole year. So to date, we have had three that we did through the individual, you know, requests, but we are looking to do one more. So that's where, we're now here kind of asking for some more options.
And not to put you on notice on your, you know, schedule, but, you know, in either practice or in theory, you know, we have 30 days in a month, and you could have indoor events there every day, right? It could be a conference, it could be the farm show, it could be a basketball tournament, or it could be machine gun calé last Tuesday.
Yep.
Yeah, not that I went. But, but by the same token, of all those 30 days in a month, there'd only be two at the most where you would have something going on outside.
Correct. And really, you know, and because we're requesting, it's really the flexibility, because as I said, we're really looking at that four to five range to be truthful.
For the whole year, probably.
For the whole year.
Right, right. There'd be no more than two a month, and again, it could be just something in the afternoon before a barnstormers playoff game, or it could be the farmers out there looking at a corn picker and having some, having a barbecue before the farm show.
And really, you know, in transparency, that's a parking lot where we charge parking, so really, we're looking to kind of use that as parking for our events. So that's where we have to determine, does it make sense for what we're trying to do for the event?
Mm-hmm.
But for the most part, the 360 days out of the year, it's used for parking.
Yep. Okay. Anything else for the applicant? Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. You can go ahead and sit down. Okay, so the way the process works now, is there anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request? Anyone that wants to speak in support? If so, you can just step on up. Okay, seeing none. Is anybody that wishes to speak in opposition, come on up. We just need you to begin with your name, address, and you've got up to five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Kim Bear. I own Bear Law Office. We're located at 838 Fifth Avenue. We also have our parking lot at 840 Fifth Avenue, which means we are directly across the street from where this is going to take place. And what I will say about what we've gone through so far, leading up to this, we really haven't had that many problems with the events that they've had over there, but we have had a few problems with some of the outdoor concerts that are held during the week. They might as well bring the band over and put them in my reception area, because that's what it sounds like. It is just so loud. So our objection isn't to anything they want to hold after 5:00 on a Monday through Friday, or anything they want to hold on the weekend. That's great, go for it. They've been a wonderful neighbor, but Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 5:00, we can't work if they're having outdoor music right in that parking lot. Or, and sometimes it's not even outdoor music, or it's in between the music, and somebody's just a little aggressive with a microphone. And, you know, in today's world, for those of you that aren't lawyers, a lot of what we're doing is we're having Zoom hearings, Zoom conference calls, Zoom meetings with our clients. And it's not only incredibly embarrassing, but it's also, I mean, we had to stop a hearing once because we just couldn't communicate via Zoom with the judge and with the witnesses. So it hasn't happened that often, but obviously, when I received the notice and I saw on there that they were planning on having live music and having bands, I knew I needed to make sure that I got down here. So, you know, we employ 10 people, and so if it's allowed to go on Monday through Friday, between 8:30 and 5:00, I basically am going to have to close down those hours, because we can't work. Most of what we do is on the phone and with Zoom. So that's really it. Do I wait for questions, or is that all I need to do?
If the board has some questions, anybody have any questions for Kim?
Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. All right, anybody else here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, anybody here to just speak in neutrality on the issue? Okay, seeing none with that. Any further questions for staff, zoning enforcement officer? Would you like, if you feel there's something that would be helpful, please step up.
Mr. Chair Members of the Board, Eric Lundey, zoning enforcement officer. So within the code, there's a discretionary temporary use allowance, which is given to the Neighborhood Services Director, which by way of delegation comes to my desk. In general, once we hit that two to three threshold on events, and usually what kind of creates an event is they want to have food trucks, they want to have a temporary reassignment of their liquor, beer licenses, and outside sound. Now, they could get a sound permit just for sound, and that wouldn't be an event, but it's kind of having this collective use of those types of things. Again, once they hit this threshold, it's been my determination that that's beyond the intent of what's considered temporary use. So then in the code, it gives the provision of taking, following the conditional use procedure. And so that's what brought us here today. I do want to point out that separately, if they do a street closure, where they're actually physically closing the street, that's a separate process in the city code, and they are able to have additional similar types of event things going on as street closures that may be occurring as well. So that would be outside of what you would be dealing with just on their own private property, so.
Okay.
And this is actually, by having this use, things in other parts of the code outside of zoning are enabled by the fact that it has a conditional use, such as they don't have to get a permanent premise permit for their, and they can have more than one food vendor, and, you know, they don't have to have a conditional use for their liquor sales because it's wrapped into this temporary event situation. So that's really why it's coming in front of the board.
Okay. Well, Eric, while you're here, you know, it appears if there's any concern with this from the public, it would be related to not the assembly use, but potentially, you know, some sound that could be a nuisance. And I see that in the staff's recommendation here, that any live music or amplified sound will be in accordance with appropriate sound permit, you know, 42, 258 E1. We don't want to have to memorize all those codes here as the board, but generally speaking, what parameters are there in that kind of a sound permit to
So on a weekday, they would have till 11:00 PM in a type A type permit, which would give them up to 85 dB C.
Okay. So I might hear that?
Yeah.
I might hear that off-site?
Yeah.
But is 85 dB determined to be reasonable?
That's typical downtown, yeah.
That's typical downtown?
Commercial sound permit. Weekend days goes to 12:30 AM, so.
Right, right. So like Court Avenue stuff, let's say, or something like that?
Just in the downtown area in general, it goes till 12:30 AM.
But this would be limited to 11:00 PM? And again, I think, you know, from Kim's perspective, she's talking about business day stuff, having a concern about timing with that, but regardless of the timeframe, from the city's perspective, it's 85 decibels, which the city feels is not unreasonable in a downtown district.
Yeah, and the board could certainly place the limitations on this with hours for either the sound or the overall use or whatever, you know?
Okay.
If they feel like there's circumstances which
Right.
necessitate that to be intent, and be within the intent of the code, so.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, so if there were no further questions from city staff, we give the applicant an opportunity for rebuttal, if they so choose, for three minutes, in this case, since there was somebody who was opposed to the item. I don't know, Jack, if there's anything you want to add, or any response you'd have to those concerns, that might be helpful.
Yes. So while we definitely understand the work hours, there is also some flexibility where, you know, typically our events are starting at the end of the day, while a lot of them are pre, most of our concerts start at 7:00, so we are finishing prior to the concert, so we're finishing by 7:00. And most of the time, you know, we're asking people to come visit that are working, so really, we are starting around, typically, I think we've been in the three to four start, so we can, you know, definitely make the adjustment that if, you know, 4:00 PM will help to give us time based off a 7:00 start, you know, if that's something that will help so we can have the flexibility, that is something we can, for sure, can work with. So, you know, based on typical, doors are at 6:00, 7:00 start, a 5:00 limitation doesn't give us a lot, but while we understand how it impacts our neighbors, we are, you know, we would be able to work within kind of that adjusted timeframe if that's some restrictions to be added as well.
Thanks. Thank you, Jack. Okay, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. Anybody have any initial thoughts?
Well, before we get into the discussion about potential start time, weekday restrictions, to go back to the issue about how many per year, I wonder if we think that it's, we should cap that at like half a dozen or something like that? Or if it's not necessary, we can just leave it and they could have up to 12?
I mean, I don't see the, personally, I don't see the need. I mean, I think two, no more than two per month sort of is a reasonable cap. I think that shows within that timeframe of, what did they say, May to October? So that's not a concern for me, but could be for others.
Yeah, and, you know, sometimes we think about, you know, let's say a bar or some, oh yeah, Friday and Saturday is where it's at, and so, you know, if we did two a month, well gee, they could only pick one weekend for music. This place has events potentially every day. You know, certainly, we think of the sporting events and the concerts likely weekends and evenings, but, you know, the NCAA tournament's been in Des Moines twice in the last five years, and they're going to show up again. I think giving them some flexibility to have, you know, up to two a month, which even, you know, not to put Jack on the spot, he probably won't do, but if it's no more than two out of, you know, 30 days in a month, I don't see that as a big, a big change in use or impediment to the surrounding area, just on the frequency.
I was kind of hoping you'd go through different examples, some more, because you've kind of gotten a roll earlier, and then just kind of list off.
We've all gone down to different events, I am certain, as we have at many other facilities, you know? Two weekends at the state fair, fun place to be. I think to put it in perspective, the biggest concern here, I didn't hear anybody concerned about congestion, about parking, about traffic, it was a little bit about concerns about sound. But what I have found here on the board is we should be here to put reasonable framework on things, and how that picture gets painted and filled in, that's going to be up to an applicant to carry out our intent with the framework that we put forward. I don't think setting hours when they can start, or hours before they can't have anything, I think that'd be a little unreasonable. Let's take the NCAA tournament, that starts at 10:00 in the morning. I could see having a rally if the Hawkeyes or Iowa State can play in their own backyard. I think that'd be great. There's a delicate balance between allowing somebody to have some outdoor sound and then somebody who says, I can hear it, or it's disruptive. I don't know how their office is set up, I don't know if they have appropriate doors or windows within reason, but I don't think that the board should be taking it to that micromanagement level. This is a temporary use, which means it's like a conditional use if there's a problem with it, and the city determines, hey, we're getting way too many complaints here, and staff goes out and observes, yep, this is, this really is disruptive. I'm not trying to disallow the testimony here per se, but I'd need to see probably a lot more before I'd be inclined to put restrictions on the when.
I guess I disagree. I mean, we already have restrictions on the when in here, in the draft.
Correct.
And so, and not only did the commenter kind of suggest specific times, but when Jack came back up, he kind of seemed amenable to, at least to compromise on that. He suggested four initially, I think, and that seemed to give him enough time, which doesn't seem like it maybe is entirely satisfactory to the person who commented, but it does seem like it gets us somewhere and puts some guidelines that are, I agree, we don't want to be, I mean, we've had too many sound discussions, and a lot of that is policing, but I think the time, the time restrictions are a cleaner way, in a more definitive way, to put some boundaries on it. And they're already in here at the, at the end of the time, at 11:00, and so to put that on, you know, the earlier time on weekdays, so it's 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM on weekends, 4:00 PM and 11:00 PM on weekdays, that seems like it's in line with what we've already kind of conceptualized.
Anybody else?
Is there any way to control the decibels of the sound for like an hour at the beginning and then?
Well, I think that gets, well, first of all, they have to control the decibels, that'd be a requirement in their sound permit, and certainly, you can do that, it's a volume control knob. But are you talking like a scaled decibel approach or something?
Yeah.
Again.
That's too much.
Yeah, the police department would have to be out there with a sound meter or something and trying to figure that out.
And like, the bass seems to be a really big problem, right? And it's not captured in decibels.
Right, exactly, yeah. And I'm hopeful that's not the biggest issue. I guess I missed somehow that I might have, I had a question for Gary. I might have missed, did Jack say that during the weekdays, he'd be okay with not having outdoor sound until after 4:00?
So I
I just kind of maybe, go, I'm going to give you a little like liberty, since this is an important thing. Did you state that during weekdays, you'd be okay not starting outdoor sound until 4:00 PM?
And I did say typically, we start between 3:00 and 4:00.
Okay.
So yes, again, having the flexibility is important, but at the same time, having an understanding of kind of what the board wants to decide, if there are things that, you know, we need to adjust, ideally having that, the flexibility and really kind of understanding what we can do, you know, we can work as to do, understand what's being said.
Okay, all right, thank you, Jack.
But Jack, if I could just say, I mean, we don't want to tie your hands either, I mean, if it's, if three is better, say three. I mean, I don't, you know, I would hate for us to say four here today, right?
Yes.
And then you, and then you, your hands are tied.
And yes, so being able to make noise through sound versus set up at three is very, you know, that allows us, we would still need to be setting up, so I guess just to clarify that. If it's turning on basically the music at three, then yes, that's something that we for sure could do and be very reasonable. But again, knowing that it, they can take place on the weekends as well, so.
Okay. Okay, all right, thanks, Jack. You can go ahead and sit down. Okay. All right, so back to board deliberation then. Any further thoughts or maybe a potential motion here?
Well, as indicated by the applicant here, he's amenable to, you know, during the week. He wants to be a good neighbor. 3:00 sounds like it could work for him. We also have the backstop that if, you know, if things aren't working out, there can be reconsideration of this use, so I think we should move forward with taking staff recommendation, but changing the time during the week to 3:00 to 11:00 PM, I think is what.
So like on item five, it would be events would only occur between 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM on weekend days, or between 3:00 PM and 11:00 PM on weekends?
Yeah, so that added language.
So would that be your motion?
That would be my motion.
Then I'll make that my second.
I wanted a friendly amendment, second, to allow for holidays as well, to fall in the weekend category, so weekends and holidays, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM.
So if they wanted to do it on a holiday, that's okay?
Like Labor Day, right?
Yeah.
Monday, yeah.
Okay, sure.
Is that all right?
I accept your friendly.
Party on, Wayne, okay. All right, so.
Are you talking about the event or the sound?
The sound, the sound allowed. Well, the event and the sound, yeah, right?
I was envisioning maybe
No.
Come in and be a vendor or something, but maybe not start with the sound.
Yeah. Kim might be dedicated to writing briefs on Labor Day, but I bet you she's not going to be conducting hearings, so.
No, I just wanted to ask her.
Yeah, no, that's Yeah, no, that's a good point, Eric. So, yeah, yeah, the events and related sound, yeah. Now determining on what we designate a holiday, though, I don't, I don't know how far.
I would apply it the same as the way we apply the sound ordinance, which references to recognized holidays.
Okay, yeah. Staff can make that clarification for us, and recognized holidays. Is that clear enough for the record? All right, so we've got a motion by, just in a second by me, with a friendly amendment by Nathan, to allow for the requested temporary use to be no more than two outdoor events each month, with the modification on item five. The event shall only occur between 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM on weekends and holidays, and after 3:00 PM on weekdays. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right. If everybody's clear on that, we'll go ahead and take a vote on that. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries five to zero. Okay. I think that should work out well for everybody. And Kim, I always remind my friends to not park on the private business lots on Fifth Avenue, including the bank. We have plenty of on-street and nice parking ramps in the area, and Wells Fargo paid parking, too. Okay.
Thank you.
You bet. Have a good afternoon. Thank you all for coming in. Okay, so that'll bring us now then to item three, a conditional use and variance request at 228 East Army Post Road.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. The use that is being proposed is a 6,810 square foot building for retail sales, limited use with sale of wine and/or beer. As a retail sales, limited use, no more than 40% of the grocery receipts from, sales from the premises, premises may be derived from the sale of wine, beer, or tobacco products in an MX-2 district. The subject property does adjoining a place of worship, and so the appeal in front of us is a conditional use for retail sales, limited use selling wine and/or beer for off-premise consumption in an MX-2 district, and a variance of 150 feet, less than the minimum 150 feet of separation distance for a place of worship use. So I'll go ahead and start by showing a, an overhead slide of the property that's in question. As you can see, it is just north of East Army Post Road, on the north side of the road, and it's west of southeast Third Street, right there. The property is shown in yellow. And here is, here are a couple shots that show the property. This is facing southeast as you would travel east along Army Post. Sorry, that was northeast.
Mm-hmm.
This is a photo taken directly north from the property. And then here is a photo taken facing northwest. And so as you can see, the front of the building, entrance here, the place of worship adjoining the property is set just to the east. And here is another aerial shot, just to provide a little additional context of the grocery store, the size of the grocery store, the placement of the grocery store, the placement of residential, and place of worship. And here is a layout of the premises, the inside of the store. And so you can see that they have kitchen space, storage space, space for lease. The applicant can expand, but I believe that may eventually become some restaurant usage. They are showing a box here that indicates the approximate location of the cooler that they are intending to have a beer located within. And so the, I'm going to zoom in so I can read this. So the, the property itself is approximately a little over 33,000 square feet in area. The, as I mentioned before, it's on the north side of East Army Post Road. The cooler that the appellant is proposing is 2.67 foot by 4.42 foot, or just under 12 square feet in area to be utilized for the, the beer retail. The MX-2 district does allow for the retail sales, limited use with the wine and beer sales as a conditional use, so long as the licensed premises occupied is separated by at least 150 feet from a place of worship, school, public park, licensed childcare facilities, et cetera. The, currently, the, you know, the property being along the corridor, adjoining the place of worship, it's not able to meet the separation distance that is required. If a, if a, so the variance is needed to allow for not having that separation. If a variance were granted, no more than 40% of the grocery receipts from sales on the premises could be derived from the sale of wine, beer, tobacco products. And so staff has recommended denial of the request for a variance of the separation distance. An unnecessary hardship must be demonstrated, which it has not, as the land in question can yield a reasonable return from the use permitted on the property. There are multiple uses allowed in the MX-2 district, so it is not sufficient merely to show the value of the land, has been depreciated by the regulations, or that a variance would permit the owner to maintain a more profitable use. I did want to note that if the board is inclined to grant the request for the variance to the separation distance, that decision would be reviewed by the city council, likely on September 12th, 2022. And here is a consent map, that mailings were sent out to property owners within 250 feet. And we did receive one card from the adjoining place of worship. And the applicant did have a neighborhood meeting, but no attendees made it to the meeting for comment or questions. What questions do you have for me?
Questions for Frank from the board? So Frank, I have a question. Why are these things always near where I live?
You live in a popular area now.
That's, that's a great answer. I live just south of here, straight south of here, within two blocks. East Army Post corridor is a busy commercial corridor with a lot of, a lot of zoning activity and variety, so we get these from time to time. So Frank, the question I would have is the, within the zoning district, this is classified, is what, retail sales limited? Is that right?
That is correct, yes.
What does that term generally mean? How is that defined? What is retail sales limited?
Retail sales limited, it's, it's going to be typically retail sales. So it's going to be convenience items, it's going to be grocery items. It could be other, other commercial goods associated with that.
So retail sales limited means lesser versus, do you have a category of retail sales maximum, or what?
So, so it would be the, the size and scale?
The size of the building.
And so this, this follows in, falls in between the, and I'm blanking on the terminology right at the moment, but.
Sure.
It does not, it's not a large scale.
Gotcha.
So it falls underneath that, but it's, it's also not your smallest category of convenience either.
Have, have you been in the premises for any reason yourself?
I, I have. I've stopped in there to buy some produce.
Okay.
So I have been in there. It's very much a grocery store setting from the experience of me stopping in.
That was going to be my question, whether it's professionally or your opinion, but this appears to be a small neighborhood grocery store, maybe carrying some, targeted towards some ethnic foods or something like that. Is that how you would describe it generally?
Absolutely. It's, it's, it's a, it's a small, family-owned Latino grocery store.
Okay.
So you'll go in, you'll find.
Sure.
Varieties, including a meat counter and some prepared foods as well.
Okay, all right. And we can sure ask the applicant as well, but yeah, I just wanted to get your take on kind of the general use description of the property in that zoning district. Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you, Frank. Okay, so we saw this with the first item. It's the applicant's turn to speak if they would like to present their reasoning for their case. We just need you to step up to the microphone. And ma'am, before you begin today, since this is our, this is our next general discussion item, I'll mention it again, this is a seven-member board. We don't always have seven people here. Sometimes we might have six or five, but when we get down to five members, it always takes four to approve something. So if you feel like you would want a chance to have more members here, you could ask to defer this to next month, and we could pick it up and hear it. Or you can give it a shot if you think you've got a good case this month, and we've got five people here with open eyes and ears. What do you think?
I'll do today.
You want to do today? Okay. All right, so go ahead and give your name and your address, if that's the business, that's fine. And then you've got 10 minutes to tell us why you'd like to sell some limited alcohol here.
Okay, my name is Yavira Ramirez, and my address is 228 East Army Post Road. Sorry, I'm nervous.
You're, you're fine. Just take your time, no big deal.
So I'm here because my customers are requesting beer, and I've seen that some of them do leave without buying anything, because they do want to buy, you know, just go to one-stop shop and get everything together. And, I mean, I feel like it could help us all with ourselves, too, because, I mean, I don't, we don't plan to have a lot of beer. It's just one fridge, and, you know, like, once they get in there, they can get their beer and, you know, like, produce or whatever else they need to buy, so.
So the alcohol sales that you'd like to have would just be one cooler?
Yes, it would be just beer, no alcohol.
It'd be just beer. So whether it's Budweiser, Tecate, whatever.
Yeah, tobacco, nothing, just beer.
Okay, it'd just be beer. And how would you describe your business? Are you a grocery store? Can you tell us what you generally, what, what is it you specialize in?
Grocery store, it's just produce, fresh meats, pot-prepared foods.
Okay.
Canned goods, and mostly, like you said, agave foods.
Yeah, and would, would you say you're more than just like a convenience store with a few grab-and-go? You're, a person could buy a full menu there, fruits, vegetables, meat?
Yeah, they can buy a whole, yeah.
Okay.
The whole, produce and.
And what are your hours of operation?
We open Monday, Monday through Friday from 8:30 till 9:00 PM.
Nine.
Uh-huh. Saturday, we open at 8:00 AM till 8:00 PM.
Eight.
And Sundays, we open at 8:00 and close at 7:00 PM.
Okay. All right. Let me think through here. So, within the city's regulations, you know, this district would normally allow for this use with a conditional permit from us, but because of the proximity of the place of worship next door, that's kind of where the, where the roadblock would be, if, for lack of a better term. We've had some instances before where some restaurants have wanted to sell alcohol, and I feel each case sometimes has its own merit, but we've approved some that have been too close to parks or, or places of worship because it was incidental, it was a minor part of their business, and sometimes we'd ask for maybe some extra conditions such as, you know, if we weren't inclined to approve up to like one cooler, 12 square feet, if we said something like, no signs promoting alcohol can be visible on the windows or the exterior of the building, you know, just to kind of keep that as the minor portion. If you want to have a sign inside above the cooler, you know, it's inside, it's not under our jurisdiction. But if we had a minor condition like that, as maybe a way to meet in the middle here, so you're not advertising beer on the exterior, would that be something that would be acceptable?
Yes.
Just as a point of discussion here. Okay, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, all right. You can go ahead and sit down for a few minutes, we'll check back with you. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak in support of the applicant? Anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Is there anybody that just wants to speak in neutrality? Seeing none, any further questions for city staff? Okay. Eric, anything burning? Nope?
I'm not a real fan of limiting the signage, but that's what I'm there for.
All right. So seeing no comments, then, I think we'll just close the public portion, go to board deliberation. I know we've had a few cases, you know, maybe similar or a little different, where again, it wasn't a tavern, it wasn't a liquor store, but this ordinance that was written about 10 years ago, I remember the intent behind it, and, but it, it seems like we've been kind of, we've hemmed in ourselves on a lot of uses here with this. I've even, I'd like to maybe ask if some of this could be relooked at the council level, but it is what it is. And in this case, right, right now, for what it would be, it would require this variance. So I'd be curious what everybody thinks, or any motions here.
I mean, I tend to agree with you that I think the way the city councils designed this, it's too restrictive, but, you know, maybe you and I should run for city council then and change, change that law, but.
I will support you in that effort.
Absent that, you know, they're the elected officials who set policy.
Yep.
And our, our role is to implement the, the law to the best of our ability, and I think normally, you know, if it wasn't within 150 feet of, of a church, I would have no problem at all granting the conditional use permit, but just to explain it a little further, not only is that restricted, but the variance, and staff did a decent job of explaining this, but the variance, if we were to grant it, you have to make a case that's very, very difficult to make, which is basically, like, unless you were to be able to sell alcohol, you couldn't have a business there, any, any business. And I don't think the applicants made that, that case, unfortunately, and so I don't, I'm not in, in favor of, and I, I mean, I would support the conditional use permit, it's just, it'd be a useless exercise to, to grant that and deny the variance. So I think, personally, I'm going to go with staff recommendation.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I'd also be supportive, I mean, if you do, I mean, we've done this before, if you want to craft some letter that we could send to the city council and say, look, we've had some examples, and we think that the, you know, we appreciate the intent behind what you did, but crafting something that's a little bit more either flexible or, or something with respect to separation requirements, you know, I'd certainly be interested in helping with that, so.
Nathan brings up great points at the beginning and at the end. Okay. Nathan brings up great points at the beginning and at the end of what you just mentioned.
To be clear, at the beginning, I just said I agreed with you.
Right.
Is that the good point?
On the back end here, we usually do any other business or some new business at the very end of the hearing and maybe I could ask our deputy zoning administrator to talk with us a little bit about that because I think staff, staff maybe in conversation with some other citizens and some neighborhood folks have discussed maybe relooking at that part of the ordinance related to alcohol sales. But we can cover that toward the end of the hearing. Yeah. I think the relevance, it's the case at hand in front of us for right now with the testimony we've got. Any other thoughts or potential motion? You have staff rec out there?
To make it simpler, but not to cut off conversation, but I'll move staff recommendation.
Okay.
To deny the variance.
We can see how that goes. All right. So we've got a motion to deny the requested variance, motion by Nathan, second by Marla. So all those in favor, raise your right hand to deny. That's one, two, three. Those opposed? That's two. So help us out here in the box scoring. So there was a motion to deny. In essence, that motion failed then. It didn't gain four votes. Correct?
That wasn't the question I was expecting.
Yeah. Does this mean that other motions can still be in play for consideration? Or by default, does it fail?
I think it's for to grant relief.
Relief.
I don't know if it's for every action.
Okay. Yeah. That's why I was just curious on that. Yeah. Again, not to make him sweat bullets over here next to us. So there was a motion for denial.
I mean, we've definitely had instances in the past where we haven't hit four. I'm just trying to think of whether it was a denial.
Right.
And then we'd allowed.
I'm thinking the same way.
I'd certainly have no objection personally, even though I voted for the winning side to hearing other alternative motions and then going through that process. I think what we're going to end up with is in the same position, which is we're not going to be able to grant the request.
It could be. It could be. But yes, I'm trying to remember if we've had that before, if that failed as well, if the person that made the motion would allow further motions.
Well, I think the board can certainly reconsider, you know, I guess we're distinguishing, I'm distinguishing in my head between like a motion to reconsider versus a new motion. And I think that might be a meaningless distinction.
Okay.
Because I think with the way that the motion was presented, if it failed arguably, you know, the question that the chair asked, that's really the same thing as affirmatively granting or affirmatively denying.
Saying no. Yeah. Okay.
I'm not making a lot of sense there.
Nope. I get it. Yeah.
In other words, I think that we're, we might be getting hung up on some kind of procedural technicalities that they each end up with us in the same spot, which is that it does not seem that there is sufficient support to grant the requested relief, which I think was the, was Mr. Lundey's point.
Okay. All right. All right. All right. So it appeared then, yeah, the board has made a vote on that. The motion to, well, there wasn't a motion, but to grant the requested relief did not meet muster here. So the relief is denied then, correct?
I think that's the outcome. I mean, if we wanted to, for, just for clarity's sake, and again, assuming that another motion could be entertained, and I can't think of a reason why it couldn't be entertained at this point. I mean, we could make a motion to, simply to deny the requested relief and then vote. So an affirmative vote on that would, would.
Well, that's how I.
It's the same thing.
Phrased it the first time, I think.
Right. To deny the requested relief. Yeah.
So I think, yeah. But I'm happy, I mean, I don't, I don't know that it needs to be me that does it, but if we want to have another vote, we can roll with it, I think.
It may or may not change. So I don't want to drag us into trying to circumnavigate anything here at all from a legal perspective if that's it and that concludes this part of the hearing. I'll ask you this, Gary. If down the line, regulations would change that would grant some further allowances to sell alcohol in limited uses with or without board review, then this case could come in front of us again under a new set of ordinances?
I think that's correct. It would require a new application and the new application would be based on a change in circumstances.
There we go.
And that would be permitted.
Okay. All right. All right. So ma'am, at this time, it sounds like we won't be able to grant your requested relief. There was a motion for denial on that as well. If you've got some time, you might want to stick around because I've asked if we could at least the board and staff discuss some other related things to this. If you've got some time, you might want to listen. So, all right. I appreciate your testimony today. Thank you very much. Okay. So that'll move us on to item number four, a use variance request at 3732 Easton Boulevard.
Mr. Chairmembers of the board, Bert Gross, planning staff for the city of Des Moines. Item number four is a request for a use variance for use of the property at 3732 Easton Boulevard for an office use. The subject property is located on the north side of Easton Boulevard, just across the street from the city's four-mile community center. So if you look at the blue lines on this map, that's the zoning boundaries. So everything to the left of this blue line here, if you see my cursor, is owned F flood district. And when the city adopted the new zoning map in 2019, the city's flood district followed the FEMA designated 100-year flood plane. So that's why this property, the subject property in yellow, is primarily, predominantly zoned F flood district. So a couple of months ago, the city council denied a request to rezone the property to a commercial district in order to allow the office use. I think the council determined that it would be better to leave it zoned flood, but then to grant or to consider a specific use variance by the board. So it's just a little history on this property. If anybody's familiar with this property, it's a former gas station that has flooded a few times and so it's sat vacant probably since the most significant flood, I believe in 2010, somewhere in that range. The current property owner purchased it just last October. They're wanting to use it.
Wait, Bert?
Yeah.
Does that mean this property flooded in 2010?
Yeah, this property's flooded a few times over the years, in recent years.
It's literally physically flooded. It's not just in a flood zone.
Right.
It has flooded.
It has flooded. Correct. And the city's bought out most of the residential properties in the vicinity. The city's programmed to only purchase residential properties. The city doesn't have any buyout programs for commercial. Otherwise, I think this property would have been a prime candidate for being bought out by the city. Here's just a photo. You can see the four-mile park and the four-mile community center is on the south side of Easton Boulevard. All of the other homes on the north side of Easton Boulevard in the vicinity have already been removed. This is just looking down East 37th Court. And you can see most of the homes have been removed and the land is now owned by the Polk County Conservation Board. So the applicant is aware of the propensity to flood here, so they've designed a flood wall that they can construct around the perimeter of the building. It's this drawing here at the left, our engineering department has reviewed this design. It still needs final approval, but the engineering department has determined that what's being proposed is workable and it could potentially meet the requirements for being in a flood plain. Our staff recommendation, believe it or not, we are recommending approval of a variance. I think this is the first time staff's been supportive of a variance in several years. But we do feel that it has satisfied the criteria necessary for granting a variance. And I'll just show you, put these up on the screen right now. So of the three criteria, the first is that without the variance, there's no other reasonable permitted use of the property that is allowed. And in this case, the property's owned F flood district, which our code only allows a few uses to occur in the F district. Most of those are utilities or public recreation type uses. So we do believe that without this variance, there really is no other economic value of the property. The second one is the plight of the owner is due to unique circumstances, not of the owner's own making. We feel that the applicant has also demonstrated this criteria. They purchased the property back in 2021. It's been in the flood plain for many years prior to that. So they really didn't cause the circumstances themselves and then.
Well, I mean, depending on your definition of that, I mean, they bought knowing that there was all those restrictions associated with.
Right.
Right.
That flood plain.
Yeah. The change in the zoning ordinance had occurred before they bought it, right?
That's true. Yeah. It's been zoned for several years. And then the third one, the use authorized by the zoning variance would not alter the residential or the essential character of the area. And we feel that an office use there is a pretty, I guess, non-obtrusive use. It's not going to be a major type, like a liquor store or anything that's going to attract a lot of customers coming and going. So we also, we do feel that the proposed office use would be in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. But we have recommended a number of zoning, or a number of conditions to ensure that the business is carried out properly. The first of that is that they need to comply with the chapter 50 of the city's municipal code, which deals with the flood plain regulations. As I mentioned, that plan that they've devised to construct the flood wall around it appears to be a workable plan, but they would still need to, I guess, get final approval from the engineering department to make sure that the flood plain or the floodproof steps that they're wanting to take do comply with chapter 50 of the city's code.
Okay.
The second one, just any design or in use of the building shall not impede emergency access to the subject property or to the surrounding neighborhood. Three, no construction or improvements to the property shall commence prior to obtaining a flood plain and building permit, or flood permit and a building permit. Four, so long as the property is owned F district, no outdoor storage shall be allowed on the premises of the subject property. Five, any use of the building shall be in accordance with all building codes and fire codes with issuance of all necessary permits. Six, a copy of the board's decision in order shall be recorded at the appellant's expense, so any future property owners are aware. And then seven, the zoning officer shall bring the board, the use variance back to the board if the use becomes a nuisance. And the applicant has let us know they do agree with all of these conditions, so.
Can you go back to the pictures of what the building is proposed to look like?
Like the photos or the plan?
The actual building, when they're going to make their upgrades.
Their profile, elevation drawing there?
Yeah, sorry.
So they're actually going to do something other than just the flood wall with the actual building?
Yeah, I believe, I can let the applicant speak to it, but they would be fixing up the building.
The facade would be improved.
Right.
Could you talk about the rationale behind restricting use in a flood zone? Is it just for safety's sake or is it also because of there might be implications for, say, services, taxpayer expenses, et cetera, on the city?
A lot of it has to do with our flood insurance rates.
Right.
If the city has a lot of, I guess, properties that are flooded, then the flood insurance that the standard homeowner, or the rate that the homeowner is charged will be higher. So the city does what we can to prevent any building or any use from being in the flood plain, just to keep those flood insurance rates as low as possible for the citizens.
And those flood insurance rates could go up even on properties not in a flood plain, correct? Because insurance companies just seeing a greater loss in the community or where it covers, right?
Yeah. I'm not, I don't claim to be an expert on it.
Right, right, right. But there's some kind of an actuarial correlation that there's a greater risk for that insurer in that community as a whole.
Right.
Okay.
I guess, I was just going to show, we did get two cards from Alan Rockhold, both in support. And they own four parcels.
Real rough. Do you know when it was last used as a gas station? Has it sat there a decade?
I would guess 10 years ago.
Marla, do you remember?
It's been a long time. My father-in-law owned it years and years ago.
Oh, really?
I used to deliver papers there because I was raised on East 37th Court.
See?
Yeah.
But there's, I mean, like, all the houses are gone around it.
Right.
But I say, let's do it.
Was this Super America or what was this back in the?
I thought it was Exxon, a little bit.
My father-in-law's ownership was far before that.
Okay.
I remember it's like an Exxon Mobil or a Mobil, one of the two.
Okay, Mobil station. All right. Anything else, Bert? Anything other questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Okay. So applicant or representative of the applicant, if they're here, they can step up and speak about their project. Are they here today? Sometimes applicants are not here. They are here. Okay. Good afternoon. Welcome. We just need your name and address and tell us why you'd like to get your building reused.
Okay. My name is Liz. I work for Hami Villafana. The location is.
Can you bend that microphone down so we can hear you good?
Sorry. The location is at 4600 Park Avenue. And the reason why he wants to get this approved, although this was in a flood zone, we have taken measures to be able to have safety not only for us, but for the building itself. There's not going to be a lot of people. There's probably just going to be me, since I work there every single day. We're also going to plan on fixing the sidewalk, just so people will be allowed to walk as well. We also plan on planting trees as well.
So dressing it up a little bit.
Yeah.
So, you know, the general category here would be a business office use. What's your general kind of business that you would be opening there?
So basically, we tie rebar, but that's only for outside, so it wouldn't be like actually inside the office. I work in accounting, payroll.
Okay.
So it would just mostly be paperwork that I would be doing, not specifically people coming in and out.
Sure, sure. So like a finance or accounting business?
Yes.
Okay. That'd be a pretty substantial investment though, to fix up the building the way you want and build your flood wall. But you're prepared to do that?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request? Step on up. Good afternoon, sir. Just need your name, address. You've got up to five minutes.
This is Luke Logan with Tomatich Engineering. So we did the design. Our address is 1050 Buena Vista Court. So I can kind of explain a little bit more of our design, what the purpose is for that facade, floodproofing, if you request it. That's why I came here, just in case you need.
Seems pretty clear.
Okay.
Not to me. Yeah, go ahead. Is it integrated into the building itself or is it around the property?
So it is right up against the face of the building. So we would be doing a floodproofing wall of concrete, four to five inches thick to make the existing wall impermeable, so that goes around. And then we're trying to keep as much facade on the front. So that we would have some drop-in panels that would get, have some setup time. So during a flood warning, they'd come out and they'd drop that in, in between the piers that would be constructed. So that would provide the floodproofing at the window locations and the main door.
Okay. So you're not going to have a bunch of exterior outlets on the building to let water?
That's right, yeah. Utilities would have to be moved around a little bit to get above that base design flood elevation.
Would you also help them with their general site plan, since I think this site sat long enough? It probably needs some updates on parking requirements, landscaping. Have you discussed that with the city?
Well, we would do the structure. We could get a civil engineer involved for that specific scope.
All right. Yeah. Yeah. Because I think there'd still be some site plan requirements to meet if we approve this. Okay. And that's beyond us, but I was just curious. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Luke? All right, any other questions for Luke? Okay, thank you, sir. Very innovative, okay. All right, anybody else that wants to speak in support of the applicant? All right, seeing none, anybody wishes to speak in opposition or even neutrality? Seeing none, any further questions for staff or anything staff feels they really need to share? Okay. All right, seeing none, we'll just close the public portion then and go to board deliberation. So variance test, no productive use of the property if we don't approve this. What do you think? Yeah, yeah, as Bert presented, this is a unique one. I understand the intent of the flood zoning district for new development. We don't want anybody to build there, but we're all stuck between a rock and a hard place when you've got a building sitting there, especially when the city either can't or doesn't do buyouts with, you know, probably CDBG and some other things. So it's a little bit of a catch-22, but yeah, how can anybody use this property productively? I don't see how they can.
I mean, it's sat there for how long?
Yeah, yeah.
Couple decades?
It's that catch-22 and this appears to be one of the more creative, yet at the same time feasible ways to get a property to be reused. So I'm kind of impressed not only with the applicant, but with the staff's approach here. Marla, you live over there.
I did, yes.
Give a final...
And I still drive by there multiple times a day, it seems like.
Yeah.
Well, I just want to make a motion that we approve the staff's recommendation.
Okay, a second? All right, motion by Marla, second by Rhonda, to approve requested use of variance for business office use within the flood district, subject to the conditions presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five to zero. Okay, we look forward to your project there. There'll be some creative engineering and it'll be a safe way to get that reused. Thanks for coming in today. Okay, so on our agenda, let's see, three, four, that'll bring us to item six, a type two zoning exception in the vicinity of 3020 Fluor Drive.
Chair, members of the board, Catherine Dreyhaus, planner for the city of Des Moines. The item before you is in regards to a sign request. It is a type two zoning exception. It is located at, apologies, located on the corner of Willamere Drive and Fluor Drive. This property is currently being redeveloped into a multiple dwelling site with 15 units on it. And the applicant, excuse me, the appellant is requesting a sign that would be 10 feet in height and 40 square feet in area at 15 units. Here's a few site photos to provide you some context. There is a new retaining wall as part of the Fluor Drive improvements that has been installed. And then this is from the corner at Willamere, looking north along Fluor. And actually, the sign would be located in the general vicinity, right above that corner. So the sign that is being requested is 10 feet in height, 40 square feet in area, and at 15 dwelling units within this project. The applicant currently earns four square feet and eight feet in height. So here's an example of the overall proposed sign. And you can see that we do count the stucco around it as well as the metal detailing within. And then...
And for height purposes, you're counting the wall below it?
Correct, and that would be in accordance with previous determinations made by the city on...
The wall that you're requiring them to build?
That I believe actually the city has installed that retaining wall, so...
Okay. Would, not to get in front of your presentation here, but would the retaining wall have been constructed regardless because of existing topography?
That isn't...
I think so, because it's a sidewalk.
All right, okay.
Speaking as someone who runs by there multiple times a week.
Yeah, just to fit the sidewalk in with the slope of a hill, they had to back cut it, so that's not related to the apartment project. It would, the retaining wall would have been in there regardless, correct?
Yes, that was determined
All right.
To be part of the project for the sidewalk installation.
All right, sorry Catherine, go ahead.
Not a problem. Thank you for bringing up that clarification. So there is, actually, I'm going to go back up to and then zoom in on our handy little table. You can see that within the household living areas in what would be an NX district at 15 units, they earn that one monument sign that's four square feet. At 16 or more units, they would earn one monument sign that would be 24 square feet. And since this is within a land use designation that could support that 16 or greater dwelling units, staff does feel comfortable recommending approval of a sign that kind of hits in between what's allowed and what's requested of 24 square feet and/or eight feet in height, and then just that one monument sign. And then generally, you know, we're obviously talking about some fun little issues and details with that city retaining wall. The sign would not be allowed within the public right of way, so it would have to be just, just behind that area. If you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer those.
As if we're not interrupting you enough. Is that, that's what they proposed, though, the right-of-way issue. Where they proposed it is okay or not?
It's okay where they proposed it. We've just, that's a bit of a belt and suspenders.
So the only thing for our determination is they have requested an exception to have a larger sign in square footage than allowed. The height of the sign isn't the issue, where it's placed?
The height is of the sign is an issue. They are requesting a sign that has been determined to be 10 feet tall.
I just see in, I might be reading it wrong, I just see in the appeals here, type two zoning exception of 13 square feet over the 15 square feet of signage. I don't see an appeal for the height. Am I reading something wrong?
I think you might be on five.
I'm sorry, and...
Oh, yes, I am. I need to turn the page.
I was, I'm sorry, and I was on the wrong page as well. So, yes, they're proposing that monument sign that would be a maximum of 10 feet.
Got you, okay, yep.
So it's the height of the sign and the size of the sign, not the location of the sign.
And...
Oh, and I didn't do consent map, I apologize. I think it just froze on me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
There we go. So as you can see, we did receive cards back. The vast majority came from the Park Fluor condominiums. And then because this is a type two exception, I will point out that it is a smaller notification area per code. It's abutting and property is diagonally adjacent to or across the street from the subject area, so rather than our 250-foot radius.
Mm-hmm.
And then some of the cards we've received back, I'm going to zoom in, so it's going to make it a little fun to scroll through. Let me know if I need to slow down or speed up. Or zoom in. The attached note that is referenced here will be in just a moment. There's actually, I think, one more card. Two more.
Okay, all right, any other questions? All right, all right, Catherine, are you good? Okay, all right, thank you very much. If you just put that agenda item back, the main agenda item back up there. Okay, so applicant or representative of the applicant, you've got the floor, you've got up to 10 minutes. We just need your name and address and give us your reasoning for your request.
Dan Southwick, Bishop Engineering, 3501 104th Street, Grumville. She did a pretty good job covering it here and it's just a sign, so I'll just give you a little bit of the background. Starting the project, we've worked with the city, knowing that retaining walls coming through, kind of asking on different options of where they would want that sign. So we've talked about putting it down below, but found that that would push pedestrians towards the street, so that's kind of what led to the difficulties with the height of it. I think other than that, it's been pretty well covered, so I'll just let anyone else speak on it.
Sure.
So the city has recommended, it sounds like the square footage technically is 40 square feet. The city has recommended a limitation of 24 square feet. Is that something that your client thinks is insufficient for kind of the sign's purposes or is it something that you're, like, you can't really do the design that you guys have put together or...
I think that's more of a design constraint of it, just to get that to, like, with the city fence requirements, we're making it match in so it fits the neighborhood. So trying to tie everything and make it fit the neighborhood, that's kind of where that is running into.
Okay. If I could have staff put up that profile picture, the color drawing of, yeah. So Dan, I'm assuming that the way the sign is shown in the above illustration is the area that you would be proposing of how it would look for scope and scale, right? So that's the 40 square feet there of how that would look
Correct.
From Willamere and Fluor, across from the intersection there. Okay. And this would be a lighted sign, is that correct?
I believe so.
Does it get lit from within, kind of the square arch around it, if you will, or from below or...
I am not certain of that detail.
Because it looks like kind of a metal silhouette sitting in the middle of that. Okay. All right, any other questions for Dan? Okay, all right, clear enough, thank you, sir. Okay, so anybody to speak in support of the applicant's request? Seeing none, anybody to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Come on up, we just need your name, address, and you've got up to five minutes to address the board.
Good afternoon, Paula Noonan, and I live at 3001 Fluor Drive, so if you went back to the picture that showed the properties that were surrounding, the adjacent properties, the three that are across the street from them on Fluor, I'm the one house beyond the border of being able to send in a card. So our problem with what's going on with the corner is you already have a wall that when I walk by, it comes up to here on me. And now you're going to add a sign that's four by four on top of it, so it's going to be way up there. And then they're adding additional size and meter to that purely for vanity's sake. And this project has already had a lot of scope creep. They've come before planning and zoning. I've been here many times, along with many of our neighbors and the 900 signatures that we had in opposition to rezoning this to NX1, because all of our houses are an N3A. We're ranch houses, we're one-level houses. So this is a very imposing project on the corner that overshadows most of the homes in the area. So I'm asking that the board here consider keeping it within the current zone of the NX1, four by four, we've had a lot of imposition already. And if we could just start containing some of the scope creep, we welcome the development, we welcome having new neighbors, but it's already, the size and scope is overshadowing us with the three-story structures that are going up there. So we're just asking for some containment on this, please.
All right, could I ask a question? I guess, I under, I mean, I've heard that there's opposition to this.
She's talking, wait, she's talking.
Over here.
Okay.
Sorry. I've heard that there's opposition to this and, okay, but with respect to the sign in particular, what is it, I guess I don't quite understand what the issue is with its size compared to...
Well, the visual, we already have visual obstructions on Fluor that cause a lot of accidents almost in front of that property, straight across the street from my home. And then that corner of Willamere has been very dangerous with accidents as well, especially in winter months with runoff from ice, from snow, from everything else. This sign is adding another obstacle imposition where you have to kind of keep inching up towards the corner to get around, to get a good visual impact. And the whole level of that side is just raising up in elevation. There was supposed to be openings to each threshold of each house facing Fluor, according to Plan DSM, Chapter 134 and 135 on this. So all of those openings, as you can see, there's a solid wall. Those openings aren't even happening there, so I don't know how people are getting access to Fluor unless they walk around the whole block to get there. It's just a lot of people are going to be there to use that sidewalk to get around it. We have a lot of school kids that come around it, the snow piling up there. I just, it's just something a safety concern too.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else to speak in opposition? Come on up. We just need your name, address, and you've got up to five minutes to present your comments.
My name is Tony Gardner. I'm at 2118 Willamere Drive, directly south of this development. So the city codes were created to encourage sound practices in respect to the size and placement of signs, to protect the aesthetics and environmental values of Des Moines by providing signs that serve as effective means of communication and that do not impair the attractiveness of the city as a place to live. It's supposed to protect the distinctive community character of Des Moines, which is produced by its unique natural features, neighborhoods, street patterns, skyline, and architectural features, and ensuring that signs are designed and proportion relation, in relation to the structures to which they are attached and adjacent structures. This particular sign we're talking about is a 40-square-foot sign. Now, for perspective, the Park Fluor, directly adjacent, a 10-story tower has a sign that is only three feet off the ground, just down the road at the Graves Lake Apartments, an eight-building unit, or eight-building complex, excuse me, only has a four-by-four sign. So the proposed sign is literally 90% larger than the city code requirement. The adjacent home on Fluor in Willamere is a single-story home, and this sign on an elevated surface will be taller than the neighboring home. So we are simply asking for the city to hold the developer to the requirement set forth by Plan DSM while also helping to ensure the aesthetic values of our neighborhood. So if we could go back to one of the photos that you had on Willamere there, and I just want to piggyback on Paula's statement right quick. Yes, thank you. This is a perfect example of what she was talking about, how we already have a visual obstruction, and we did prior to this wall with that hill that was right there, but they took that hill out and they encroached even further towards Fluor with this wall. So there are plenty of visual obstructions there and it creates a major safety issue for us residents. So no, I appreciate you all being here, taking the time to listen to us, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Anybody else to speak in opposition? All right, anybody speaking neutrality? Always waiting for one of those. Okay, all right, any further questions?
I think you say it with such disdain every time. I think you say it with such disdain every time.
I just like...
Nobody, everybody's scared to do it.
We...
We've had that, we've had people.
I know, but two years ago, we never asked for it that way.
Yeah.
I don't know what changed. Again, people from Switzerland, I'm waiting for them. Okay, anybody have any further questions for city staff from the board, or anything that staff feels they need to add from zoning enforcement?
It is a non-illuminated sign.
It's non-illuminated, okay, all right. Okay, all right, and we'll close public portion. Well, we did have people who were in opposition, so Dan, you've got the opportunity, if you want to say anything else, you can, you don't have to, it's up to you. You good? Okay, all right, we'll go ahead and close the public portion and then we go to board deliberation. Thoughts among the members? Nathan?
So, I, like I said earlier, run by this location multiple times a week and drive by it multiple times a day.
Yep.
And I think, first of all, just very appreciative that this development's going in there, I think it's incredibly, it's exactly a type of development that should be going along one of our busiest roads in the city, and happy to see that type of infill development increasing density in our, in Des Moines. With respect to this question, I mean, they're kind of, the height requirement seems a little silly because they're on top of something that they, is built in, right? I under, I mean, I think I understand what the neighbors are saying, I'm not sure if I buy into that entirely because the city is the one doing all the restrictions and guidance about how that's being built, and the right-of-way, and the sightlines, et cetera, like, that's all going to be done, it's a necessary component. I'm open, frankly, to what they ask, I'm also open to what staff recommended, I'm not sure if that makes that big, I'm not really convinced that it needs to be as big as it is, and like, going along with what would be allowed in a 16, you know, versus a 15, I think that's a reasonable kind of limitation, but I'm actually not convinced it needs to even be that small, so. And the height thing, I think, should be 10. Any other thoughts?
I drive by here a lot, too, south side, and yeah, you know, there are times we're kind of used to how our neighborhood looks, whether it's a single family, whether it's new development fitting in. We have a zoning district that was rezoned for this kind of development, so our issue is really just to look at the sign itself and how it fits in with, because as Tony said, you know, signage needs to have effective means, but yet also preserve the character of the neighborhood, the surrounding area. We've got a building here, it's an apartment. The current zoning would only allow it to be two by two, that's nothing. You wouldn't even see it, to me, it wouldn't be effective. I would want this property to be identified if I was a prospective tenant, or if I was delivering something there through, you know, all these delivery services, but by the same token, yeah, I also don't think it needs to be some monolith that, you know, waves a lot bigger than it needs to be. If there was one more unit here, they'd be allowed to have a sign of 24 square feet and eight foot in height, and that's pretty much what staff has proposed as a kind of meet-in-the-middle. 40 might be a little big. I agree with Nathan, you know, we have to kind of make sure here as a board, we always have to make sure that our logic and our reasoning is based on the principles we have. To me, it would be about the character and the scope. As far as safety, hey, if you're going to be turning left in or out, like Willamere, be careful, I don't think that sign is going to get in the way of that. So, I think it comes back to what's reasonable within the neighborhood for not only the property, but the surrounding area. I'd support the staff rec, and that'd be my top end. Sure, I'll make a motion for staff recommendation for approval of the Type 2 zoning exception, subject to the following conditions as they've presented, if there's other comments or a second, I'd entertain that. All right, so, motion and a second, motion by Mel, second by Marla, all those in favor to grant staff recommendation, raise your right hand, say aye, one, two, three, four, five. Okay, motion carries five, zero on that, and this is after the fact, but the sign was not to be illuminated, I think that that was made kind of clear.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, okay, as long as that's fair. Sure.
So, in A and NX, A and NX-type districts, there is not an allowance for illumination, so they'd need another, they'd have to request separately relief, now there is the allowance for it to be indirectly illuminated, so.
Okay.
They could have a lighting or something like that.
Right, so internally illuminated was not allowed in the district and was not part of their appeal?
No.
Okay, all right. Just in the back of my mind, that was kind of something that I had considered as well, that it's not going to be internally lighted, but that's a non-issue for now, they could look at external minor lighting. Okay. All right, well, that concludes that item. Again, decision orders will be available by mid-next week, so if somebody needs to apply for an amended sign permit, they can do that then. That'll bring us then to, take a look where we were at here. We're at item seven, yes, a Type 2 zoning exception request at 41 Merle Hay Road, and Frank's going to cover this one.
Chair member, members of the board, the proposal in front of us at 4100 Merle Hay Road is a proposal for installation of two wall signs within CX District. One sign would be 18.55 square feet illuminated wall sign to be installed on the east frontage wall. The other sign would be 29.15 square feet illuminated wall sign to be installed on the north non-frontage wall. This requires a Type 2 zoning exception of 25.2 square feet over the 22.5 square feet of sign area earned on the east frontage wall. That's based upon a calculation of earnings of 1.25 square feet times the linear footage, which is 18 feet along that frontage, which gets them to the 22.5 square feet. The second appeal would be Type 2 zoning exception of 17.9 square feet over the maximum 11.2 square feet of sign area allowed for a sign on the north non-frontage wall, which is based upon 50% of the signage area earned on the east frontage wall of the building. So, once again, going back to that east frontage wall where they use 22 points, where they earned 22.5 square feet, they could only apply half of that to that non-frontage wall along the north side of the building. So, once again, needing an appeal for the overage in terms of an earning, and an appeal of the amount of signage area that they could also apply to that north non-frontage wall. Just to show a little context of the property, the property is bounded by Merle Hay Road on the east Aurora Avenue, on the north, and then the Hay Market Mall development right there with a number of existing businesses. Along the frontages, there are a couple restaurants that are going to be on either side of the Scooter's Drive-Thru Coffee Shop that is being constructed at the site. Here is another image of the site, which is currently under construction, and this would be a northwestern-facing view. This would be a southwestern-facing view. Both of these views are from the Merle Hay Road perspective, but as you can see, the site, the Scooter's Coffee Shop, would be set back about 70, a little more than 70 feet from the property line is where the building itself would sit. So, here is a final aerial of the site, development area is right in here, you have that access that you could see in those photos. This would be a layout of the site. We don't, they do have a number of signs that are allowed by right, our purview under this review is really the two-wall signs, sign number one, which is on that east frontage wall, and sign three, that is on that north non-frontage wall.
How many of the, how many of the other signs are drive-thru signs?
They have a menu board sign, they have a clearance sign, and I believe that there's some directional signage, and a menu board with canopy sign, and those are permitted by right, but through the code. Monument sign. So, the first sign that we're taking a look at is actually, so this one is showing the non-frontage signage, that is 29.15 square feet, and so this would be on the north non-frontage The next sign, which would be on the, let me zoom out just a touch, this is a sign that would be 18.55 square feet, that would be on that east frontage wall of the building. Here's a closer view of the signage that is intended to go up on that north non-frontage As I had previously stated, the applicant does earn 1.25 square feet per linear feet for a building. However, the building is rather narrow, it's, has about 18 feet of frontage there, so the earnings are relative to that. Staff does believe that, you know, the appellant has satisfied criteria for granting the Type 2 zoning exception so long as the square footage of the proposed signs on the east and north frontage facades of the building do not exceed 33.75 square feet. This is equivalent to 50% more than the signage area that is earned, and that is a typical cutoff for what staff would generally be supportive of. The appellant obviously is asking for more square footage than that, so that is why this item would have been requested to be moved to consent, and we're discussing it here. And so, as staff recommendation, we are recommending approval of the requested Type 2 zoning exception with a number of conditions. One of, the one condition in particular, that the signage shall not exceed a combined 33.75 square feet of area, or 50% over the maximum 22.5 square feet of area allowed for the wall-mounted signs. And then our standard conditions that typically follow signage, any sign shall be installed in general accordance with the character elevation submitted with the application, and any sign shall be installed in compliance with the sign permit issued by the city's permit development center to a sign contractor licensed by the city. And here is our notification map, and I'll zoom out just a little bit. We did not receive cards or feedback on that request. So, I will take it back to the header slide and ask if board has any questions.
Nathan?
Why stop now? So, been a hot bench today. So, the, it took me a while to figure out the math, but as I understand it, the first calculation here is just the raw calculation of what they've requested over what they've earned.
Correct.
Like, aggregate.
Yes.
And then the second one is, you've kind of done a, is the east or the north non-frontage wall, is this in code always, or is this just like a staff shortcut, the 50% of what's been earned on the east side?
Well, 50% is what you, so, for a non-frontage wall, meaning not facing the street.
Yeah.
You can apply 50% of your earnings to that side. And so, in this instance, with it being 20, 22.5, generally, they could only apply half of that earning on that north non-frontage wall. Well, in this instance, they're asking for more than what's earned, and assuming you are at a point where that calculation were approved, you could apply half of that earning to that north non-frontage wall.
I have, I have other thoughts, but I'll save them.
Yeah, to expand a little bit off Nathan there, too, you know, this seems simple but kind of complicated at the same time. The number of signs is not an issue, the facades or the walls they're on is not an issue, north, southeast, west, whatever, but that area, whether individual or combined, they were looking for some variances per se. It looks like a combined 43.1 square feet, if we added up the two exceptions, right? You're basically saying that, hey, we'll approve these on the east and north, but your combined area can be no more than 33.75, right?
Correct, and that is typical of what staff would...
Exactly, which puts us rounding, you're within about 10 feet of what they were, 10 square feet of what they were requesting, just, just kind of proportionally. They want it to be combined just a little bit bigger than what staff recommendation is, but your recommendation then keeps it into that 50%, kind of a, little bit of a, you know, just kind of a meet-in-the-middle thing, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, a staff's rec, okay. So, that just kind of helps me with scope and scale here, that the applicant wants 10 square feet of combined area over what the city's willing to recommend in this case.
Wait, 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 now I'm confused again.
I think the math is a little more than that.
So, because they wanted 25.2 square feet more on the east and 17.9 on the north.
And, but they're willing to, that's, that's what's earned.
What, so what's earned is 22.5 square feet.
Yes, that's what's earned.
Their total signage is actually 25.2 square feet over that 22.5.
Yeah, not the total square footage of the sign, but I'm saying that they want an extra 43 square feet over what's earned, and you're saying, we'd like to propose 33.75 square feet over what's earned.
So, I think they're just asking for 25.2 square feet.
Correct.
Okay.
And the city is recommending allowing them for more than that.
We're indicating that for the total combined sign, that we would be comfortable with 33.75, so it would be up to them to...
So, they could do the signs they want?
No.
Why is that?
The, they earn 22.5, we are granting them 50%, we are saying, okay, we'll be supportive of 50% more than that earning.
You're, it's not 33.75 more than 22.5, you're just saying, I get it, okay.
All right, we're, we're kind of getting there.
Yeah.
Yep. All right, Frank, you good for now?
I am.
Okay, all right, well, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant, help shed some further light on this intriguing issue. Thank you for your patience in waiting today, you've got up to 10 minutes to present your reasoning for your... You've got up to 10 minutes to present your reasoning for your appeal. We just need you to start with your name and address, please.
Andy Nelson with Omaha Neon, and it's 1120 North 18th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68102.
Welcome to Des Moines.
Thank you. I've driven around all of the sites today as we've been, we have three locations that are under construction now or soon. And two of these locations are in this exact same zone with the exact same problem. So you might see one of us next month. But today's meeting details are going to kind of determine how we proceed on that next meeting as well. But we, I've been doing the signs for scooters for 10 years now, and we run into this square footage issue commonly. So what I wanted to let you know is that the typical scooters around the United States that we are doing are typically 237.62 square feet on their building. So when we are being presented on these tiny little buildings, we run into gray areas of the code continuously. What happens is when our short end of the building is facing the frontage or the street, and that's what's facing our frontage of the signs for the whole building, we run into these problems where we can't adequately sign the property so that it's visible to customers. And I know the easy answer typically is, well, why don't you just put scooters up there? We did that once almost 10, eight to 10 years ago, actually in Des Moines. And I have not stopped getting phone calls about it since then, that that will never ever happen again. So the reason being is that because scooters is, there's electric scooters, there's scooters all over the place. People need to understand that they're a coffee drive-through. And I don't know if you guys have the electric scooters in Des Moines area, but that's their common issue that they run into when people aren't aware that they're a coffee shop.
Right.
But with the square footage issues that we're having here, initially, what we were asking the city to take a look at, and where we based our numbers off of was, we were asking that the long elevation of the building possibly be used to calculate the square footage for the whole building. But because of the way that the code reads, we felt it was best to describe what we were asking for in this scenario. The short end of our building is only 18 feet wide that faces the road. So you can see there's a little bit of a design issue with that. The long end of the building, which is going to get the most traffic coming in from the north, is where we are trying to put our letters, the Scooter's Coffee Drive-Thru. Based off of the staff recommendation, we were hoping that if we cannot get support of the full 47.7, what I wanted to propose to you also, and just show you, if I put something down here, can you guys see it? Okay. We just finished up opening two locations in West Des Moines where we ran into the similar So for example, these two signs here are very, very similar in size to what we're asking today. They're actually just a tad bit smaller. So the Scooter's Coffee Drive-Thru letters in this photo that you're looking at right there, I will tell you, are reduced by one inch from what we were asking on this one specifically. And the Scooter's logo itself was also being reduced by just a couple of inches. And that was based off of what West Des Moines did, was they allowed us to count the long elevation of the building in a similar situation for the square footage to count the whole property. I think most of the time, they try to angle these buildings for this very reason, to where the long elevation faces the road. But when they can't because of the property that they're going into, that's where we kind of run into these difficulties. One more thing I did want to say, too. Part of our dilemma is, as well with what I was saying, it's important to say, is Scooter's Coffee Drive-Thru, is we can only reduce those down so much before we can't build them without having significant modifications to the sign. Because as they're drawn right now, we barely have enough room to get a hand down inside of them to place LEDs inside. So we are limited with the stroke and the font and everything else on how small we can go. And this is actually the smallest that we can get some of those letters fabricated with and getting LEDs inside of them.
You could just use like a small child's hand.
I get dirty looks very often from my shop, I assure you. And I'm like, I'm sorry, I tried.
So kind of, kind of help me out here with this one. What you're proposing, generally speaking, looks very similar to your picture on the right?
It's very close, yes.
Within an inch, you said?
Yep.
Well, it's both of those.
Right, right, including the little circle one.
Yep. The little circle on this one is about four inches shorter than what we were showing on this location here. And with that being said, you can see how small it actually looks. We like to refer to it as a postage stamp on a piece of paper because it's so small, which is why we're hoping that maybe there would be a little bit more of an allowance just so that the Scooter's letters are a tiny bit bigger, that they can be more readable from the street.
You're saying even on what I call your circular logo one?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right. So staff recommendation would still, I mean, I know, you know, when you're trying to negotiate, you know, well, you want this, and somebody else wants this, but this would not do it.
Right.
Staff recommendation is just not workable for you.
Correct, correct. We wouldn't be able to fabricate the letters and get LEDs inside of them at that size and keep the logo on the building at the same time, in a readable fashion.
And the building that you're proposing on Merle Hay, or is that existing or it's proposed?
It's being built right now.
It's being built.
Yep.
It's relatively speaking, it's the same kind of facade and.
The only difference is, is that Merle Hay Road, I believe, has an Eiffel Wall instead of a brick like was in West Des Moines, but otherwise exactly.
At the general height and roof and kind of.
Exactly the same building, otherwise, yep.
All right, I got you. Yeah, and you've had, you had your location there at University and Second Avenue by the main post office, right?
Yep.
For some time now. And you're doing Douglas and Beaver?
Yep.
On the southwest corner?
Yeah, so if we do, I know that the location being built on Euclid Avenue or Euclid Boulevard right now, that's the one that we, after today, will be sending something to Frank for September's meeting. But I believe the one on Douglas, because it has dual frontage on that location, and the zoning on that was a little bit different, that we were okay on that property.
So generally speaking, yep, you've got existing locations, doing well out, you've got some more coming up.
Yep.
Okay. But the one in front of us today on Merle Hay looks generally like the pictures you're showing here for.
Correct.
Scope, scale, and character.
Yep. And this one just opened in the last 30, 45 days.
Okay. All right, I got you.
And the major sign here, the one that has Scooter's Coffee Drive-Thru, that's on the south side of the building?
This is, I believe it'd be on the north side of the building. On the one that we're proposing, is that what you're talking about? Yeah, I believe that's, I believe that's the north, according to my plan.
Okay, the north side, and that's the longer side?
Correct, yep.
Okay. You would see it, yeah.
Yeah, you'd see it southbound on Merle Hay, but it faces the interior, or it faces into the parking lot as well, right?
On this elevation, actually, I believe, if I'm correct, I believe it faces Popeye's.
It faces Popeye's.
I believe so.
Okay. I got you. Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you, Andy.
Okay, thank you.
I see a lot of people in the audience, so we may still have a lot of comments here. Anybody speak in support, opposition, or neutrality? Step forward. Seeing none. Any further questions for staff? Seeing none. We'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation.
So I, I think, I'm ready. I understand why staff's making this recommendation, but I think it's too limited. I think there are a couple of different ways you could think about this. One is, I mean, if they just turned the building when they were building it, they'd have the capacity to do it based on earned space. Or you could think of it as, this is a freestanding ability, building in the middle of a parking lot that actually does have multiple frontage. It's not technically, like legally, multiple frontage because it's not on a corner, but it actually functionally serves as like multiple frontage spots, right?
Yes.
And so if you were to think about it that way, they would also earn more. And I understand why staff is recommending 50% more because that's their custom, which I appreciate. But I think, from my perspective, they've earned this, and I think it's an appropriate use and an appropriate setting, and they meet all the other requirements for type two exception. Not a variance, thankfully, that we're not dealing with that in this context. And I'm sure if Dave was here, he'd agree with me.
Yep. The spirit of Dave is always with us, even if he's gone. Yeah, this is at the exception level, and I give the applicant credit for, you know, this is how it would look, this is how it does look at other locations. Yeah, there's a lot of view sheds from there, all related in and around that kind of big box area. It's reasonable, it's scope and scale. I know we're trying to reduce signage on the Merle Hay corridor, which we're doing because there's no pole sign related to this. It's relatively innocuous for what's, I mean, it's not glaring, we've seen some that are. And I'm like, come on. But yeah, this is more than reasonable to me, too. Anybody got a motion?
I'll move staff recommendation. Oh, no, sorry, I'll move to Grant. Well, not staff recommendation at all. The requested approval, and then add in two and three.
Yeah, that.
Of what staff had recommended.
And that would be it, at least for what we're proposing from a legal perspective. That's sufficient for additional conditions, two and three. Site plan requirements, applicable standards.
I'll second that.
Necessary permits, two, right? One? Compliance with, or wait, come on, that's eight. City's permit development center signed contractor, that's in there, too, right? Yep.
Yep, that's number three, yep.
Okay. Justin, you were second on that?
I'll second the motion, yep.
Okay. All those in favor of granting the requested zoning exceptions subject to the conditions presented, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries five to zero. All right. Yeah, and if you ever do want to get in the scooter business, just make sure they don't lay around on sidewalks. They don't lay around on sidewalks. But I'd say stick to coffee, you're doing great. All right.
See you next month at my.
Yeah, yeah, you got a filing deadline to meet. Okay, so I believe that's our actual agenda items for today. Just as chair, just a couple of things, let's go ahead and get our minutes out of the way. For those that were here last month and are here this month, if you've reviewed the minutes, any changes? If not, would there be a motion to approve? Marlis, Marlis' motion, second by Rhonda, all those in favor who were here last month? Aye, that's four of us, okay. Just what it took, otherwise we couldn't approve the minutes. So from time to time, the board does have the ability to request that the city council consider issues that we've dealt with, sometimes on a repeated basis, where we may be able to suggest that city staff and the council work to review existing ordinances. Sometimes it can be for clarity, fairness, or just even to meet the intent of the zoning ordinance. Some things seem well-intended, but when you try to carry them out, they just don't work. This board a number of years ago did ask, you know, the board chair, myself, with the board's vote, we sent a letter and said, hey, we need to get rid of these pole signs. When they're out of use, we need to find a way to get rid of them, we need to look at monument signs. I think that helped spur some changes in the ordinance. Sometimes the staff themselves, through the planning administrator, will ask the council to consider changes or amendments to zoning ordinance. But I've seen over the last few years that the intent of the alcohol sales kind of, you know, conditional use permits and variances or restrictions, when those came forward, we had places like TNT Lounge across from East Walnut Elementary. Rhonda, Marlis, you remember? Yeah, that had been there historically, but certainly, we wouldn't want a tavern to be allowed to open next door to a school under a new setting. So I think a lot of the intent was to limit what I would call liquor stores from popping up, or maybe even continuing if they went out of use, or certainly taverns. But we've had a lot of like little restaurants, and even a nice little neighborhood grocery store, that apparently, when we, as, and the way it's set up, yeah, it's hard to get over that variance test. If you're a little too close to something, a park, a place of worship, a daycare center, you start drawing those circles. And there's a lot of places that just can't even sell a six-pack of beer with somebody's groceries for the week. And that's what I buy. So I've asked Bert to step up here, I think he's kind of reading some vibes here. You know, it could be a discussion of us, it could be what staff is thinking on their own, but I'd like to know more about if there's a way that we could maybe look at proposing to ease a few of these categories so that we don't keep running into all these variances tied into, especially like parks and stuff.
How specific does the request to the city council, how, I guess, not that how specific it doesn't need to be, but how specific was yours back then?
It was very like, like general on the pole signs to say, here's our reasoning. Based on scope and scale, we want to bring those down. I remember a Hardee's up at Euclid and Northeast 14th that by right could put in a 40-foot tall pole sign, if I remember right, Bert. Yeah, it was pretty close to that. And I was like, what is going on here? So usually, it's been a couple of times over the years, but it's maybe been no more than a one-page letter to ask about the actual topic. I don't think we actually got into direct wording, but more in intent. And I think when we've got our restaurants and our grocery uses where less than 40% is alcohol, tobacco, et cetera, for sales.
I would limit to, yeah, I would agree. I mean, we had two or three last meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The same thing, and it was hard for me to vote against it, but, you know.
Right.
This one, too.
But Dave, Dave was here.
Dave was here.
When you trade Dave for me, that's a, that's a different approach to variance requests.
But all of us understand our intent, sometimes our boundaries, and then the challenges that that can present. Because I think in the end, we're all trying to come up with what allows businesses to be successful, but preserves our neighborhoods and our character. And I think sometimes we get squeezed on that.
And it's a good, maybe we should include in the letter, like, they still have to get a conditional use permit, right? Like, we would still have the ability to review, and like, in this instance, like the church right next door said they did not want it, and so we would have had to take that in, you know, we could take that into consideration.
They don't want anybody drinking alcohol.
Yeah, that was an interesting, that's different than, it's different than my church. But, yeah, so, but you could make that assessment based on the needs of the community in that neighborhood and the requests that's been being made.
Yeah, just like a tavern is allowed in, let's, I'm going to just call them commercial districts, I'm still memorizing these, but a tavern is allowed with a conditional or special permit, but there's still room for us to review.
That oversight, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But in a case like, I think, again, today, there at 220 East Army Post, we almost get kind of, kind of hamstrung on, well, the variance test is a big one. But if it was more that, if it is just for a restaurant, or a non-majority, you know, less than 40%, you know, even a minor, minor percentage, let's look at it as a conditional use. And the same thing for both of those restaurants we had. I'd like to have that oversight if they're next to a city park, but I'd like to have us be able to weigh that. And certainly, we're all citizens of Des Moines, and for most of us, we've either been to these locations, we live near there, we drive by there. So, but I think sometimes we aren't allowed to take those into account because we get boxed in. But Bert, could you tell us, has staff run into any issues yourselves? Are you doing periodic reviews?
Yeah, so it's really two things at play. One, the board could send a letter to city council, and then city council could direct staff to draft an amendment for their consideration. But the other thing at play is that city staff does maintain a list of changes that we believe should be considered. So I went through and looked at our list, like, right up on the screen right now is the alcohol table. So there's three things on our list that staff is wanting to discuss. It doesn't necessarily mean that staff will ultimately propose these changes, or that city council will agree with staff and amend the code. But the three things that we currently have on our list for discussion are, as Mel already mentioned, is that 75-foot separation distance requirement for restaurants really needed. And this table on the screen, at first, it's kind of overwhelming, but once you start to look at it, it starts to make more sense. So like this top box areas about for the retail sales, the next one is for fuel stations, the next is for liquor stores, then tobacco stores, and then the restaurant bars and other uses that sell alcohol for on-premise consumption.
And throughout, the percentages are the caps of the revenue they bring in from liquor, wine, and beer, or depending on the category? And then the, the non-percentage numbers are separation?
Yeah, the number of feet they need to keep from a church, park, school, or daycare.
Okay.
And then if there's an open circle, that means they need a conditional use. So.
Still a lot of heavy lifting, but yeah, I can, I mean, I sit and work through it, I get it.
Yeah, so like I said, we have three things on our list right now, like, one is that 75-foot separation really needed for restaurants. And it's really just these categories. So the DX1, DX2, DXR, those are the downtown commercial districts. You can see there's no separation distances required for those. And then MX1.
Is the, is a contemplated alternative to require conditional use permits? Or? Is the, is a contemplated alternative to require conditional use permits, or?
I don't think that was being considered, but that would be a trade-off. I mean, that.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I don't.
That you just remove it and it wouldn't need review, but maybe it could be a trade-off, so we do have some oversight?
Right, I mean, that probably is not a bad idea, then if it does become a nuisance, then the board could revoke it.
Well, we've had places that start as restaurants.
Right.
And say they're a restaurant, I won't name any, and then they're not a restaurant, and then our hands are tied unless city wants to sue them, but if we had a, still had a conditional use permit.
Yeah, so like, the other two things that staff has on our running list, and we're trying, like, the code took effect in December of twenty-nineteen, and we were doing amendments every two or three months, but now that it's two years old, we're trying to just do like one big set of amendments each year.
Right.
So hopefully later this year, um, I guess that's probably getting, late this year, early next year, we're planning.
In the next six months.
Yeah, do another.
Bert, would it, would, would it like help and support your recommendation if you had a letter from us?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
To be honest, I don't know that changing the requirement for the small, the limited, I don't know if staff would be keen on that, so knowing that the board might be more, um, I'm just shooting from the hip here.
I mean.
I really haven't really discussed with staff, but I do know that the, the small ones are the ones that really have become nuisances for neighborhoods over the years, where they open up as a small grocery store, and next thing you know, they're a full-fledged liquor store.
But if they had a conditional use permit as well.
Right.
For safety valve, um, yeah, and I'm not gonna, you know, bring up an agenda item we may or may not have had today, but in general, I, I could see some of these coming up where it, it still, I feel like it just, um, ties our hands too much. I, I wish we could have said, hey, can we look at a conditional use permit? Because I do want to protect our places of worship, our parks, um, our daycare centers, but, uh, uh, again, if we've got, I don't know what I would even use as a different example, but if we had, um, um, the nice little grocery store in Sherman Hill, if that was next to a park, well, uh, yeah, they'd have to meet a variance test to sell alcohol in there, you know, Gateway, right? That's what that's called, yeah.
Yeah, and.
And I know that's the, but, but would Gateway be in a different category? Let's just use that.
That's what I was gonna say, so there's three categories of retail. Limited is twelve-thousand square feet or smaller.
Okay.
General is between twelve-thousand and forty-thousand square feet, and then large is over forty-thousand square feet. So like, the Hy-Vee's would fall into the large, like, the Walgreens, CVS is probably Gateway market would probably fall.
So Gateway would still need to be set far enough away from a park or a place of worship, or, oh, it wouldn't meet the variance test. See, and I would kind of see that as being something that I just don't get, because, uh.
I don't want to muddy the waters or.
Sure.
Or waste people's time, but I was just kind of curious. When we looked at, at this item, I noticed that, of course, the grocery store was quite a ways away from the entrance to the.
Right.
Place of worship.
Right.
Good point.
Where's that hundred-and-fifty feet measured?
Sure, so if the business is the sole tenant on the property, then it's measured from the property line of that.
From the property line.
But if it was like in a strip mall, and there's like a leased premise, then we would measure from the leased premise to the property line of the church.
Our old friend Tom, who used to be on the board, is vice-chair of the attorney. That used to tick him off, because it was to the property line, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, under the old code, I think it was property line to property line.
Right. Yeah, because, yeah, the orientation of the buildings could face away, no one sees the other use, but we, but you can't take that into account, right?
Right.
I have other things to say, but I know that you're trying to get through all three of the things.
Yeah, the other two are very minimal, like, I'll just go through them quickly. So like, another one, we've noticed that in fuel stations, there's requirements here for the sale of alcohol in the MX1 district, but the MX1 district doesn't allow fuel stations, so.
Anyway.
It's kind of moved to have that there, so we thought that could be removed.
Just administratively.
The other one that was kind of stood out to us is, in the RX1, RX2 district, we currently allow, in this column right here, you can see the limited, um, retail sales selling alcohol. And the RX1, RX2 is really the most, I guess, restrictive, um, commercial district, so it's kind of surprising that in that district, we would allow, um, a small grocery store to sell alcohol and liquor, whereas even like the MX1, MX2 districts, we don't allow for liquor sales at all, so.
And even in the, the limited, you have wine and beer sales as a separate category. I think our item today was just.
Yeah, so the item today.
It would just be in that.
Right, that was an MX2 property, so you can see here, this is blank, so they weren't even eligible to apply for liquor sales, they were only eligible to apply for wine and beer.
Mm-hmm, right, right. And, and I, and I still kind of understand that restriction on the limited sales, because just like you said, it gets you into the dicier stuff.
Right.
If you're selling hard liquor, you usually got a good variety of it, and that can easily scope creep into your sales, but, uh, again, to take home a six-pack of Dos Equis or something along with my week's groceries, uh, you know, it's, it's just too bad we're, we have to get into that. But.
Right.
Kind of to keep this moving with Bert's summary here, I, I know staff may or may not completely, through your zoning administrator, or, you know, department director, you know, have full positions on any of this, of what you want to do, but if we even put together an advisory letter, um, that, that maybe, you know, with the help of our board attorney, we could craft a draft of it, would that be something, if we brought it back to our board, certainly us five, and we got a, two other good members who aren't here, if we looked at it and felt like we liked what was in it, maybe we could just encourage staff to review this, or the council and staff at an appropriate time within their.
Yeah, I mean, a couple of things for consideration. One, you could, you could draft the letter to city council, or you could draft it just to staff for their consideration.
Maybe we could just draft it to staff, and I, I, I'm not trying to kick up a hornet's nest, but, but at the same time, if, if you're already going to be looking at doing some of this, and this could be a little extra oomph or support, almost like a recommendation letter, that, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not sure the board can go far enough to like, you know, show up at city council and speak, I don't think that's within our purview, um, to be able to do that.
Yeah, the other thing I was gonna mention is on previous letters, I can't remember what they were, I know the one was the monument signs.
We had one other, oh, oh, the signage in the flood zone.
Like, yeah.
Because that was Jop on East Euclid, and we're like, that isn't fair, that you can let them use the building, but they can't have a sign on it.
Right, it was a legally conforming building, but they just couldn't have any signs, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I just drove by there the other day, and my wife pointed out the sign. She goes, don't those look nice? She was rubbing it in. I, yeah, 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 yeah. I think that was very.
And I think on that letter, the, you and the attorney had drafted the letter outside of the hearing, and then you presented it to the board at the next meeting, for the board to say, yes, this is our position.
Okay, so.